Good evening, hi. Christine, thanks for putting that up. Helpful.
Sure. So how come we're not using the same channel or whatever that we're using right now?
Yeah, I thought about doing it, but you know, I tend to use the one for the council meetings, and it is a council meeting, but I put in a different one, sorry.
Hi.
Hey Barbara. Joan, Paula, Jean, Kathy.
Where's your sunset, John?
It's a sunrise.
Oh, okay. They look the same.
Yeah, I don't remember where this one is. It's a sunrise. I could look it up, I suppose, geez. It's a no year Barbara, it's a sunrise.
Ah, of course, of course, of course, of course.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
Hey. Hey Bruce, I'm gonna, I ask you to introduce your, make, at least make statement on the Meadow issue. When we get to it.
Jean, Jean having trouble?
Who?
Jean? I just saw her name flash on here.
Here she comes again.
Quick, catch her.
Jean, Jean is there, just no video. Right. Chat. I can't seem to turn on my camera. Or microphone, will we even come back? She's back. Any better?
Hi Eva.
Hello, how's everybody doing?
Okay.
I didn't hear.
So is this storm tomorrow really supposed to be that bad? I just saw on the lesser people are worried.
Who knows?
You know, you never know if it's going to be like the big buildup for the Saturday fizzle.
Yeah.
Or whatever. It's, yeah.
That's strange.
And then we have little, you know, you know, sort of thunderstorms and trees fall down, but you know, there's no production.
That's true. That's true.
Hey, everybody.
Hey Peter.
Hi John.
Dave, who do we got here? We've got everybody, we have Rob and I think we've got every, no, Mary. And we've got a cat.
She's a little early tonight.
Oh. They don't like it when you're paying attention to somebody else.
Yeah, they'd best like to be sitting right here. Yeah, go away. Go. Go away.
All right, we'll give us a few more minutes.
Hi Mary. Okay, I will tell them. John? Mary, Mary has a new computer. And she has to install, she's got to install the software. So she'll get on, but it'll be a minute.
You're gonna go over and help her?
Not I.
I know.
You gotta be kidding.
Yeah, everybody should know that you can always log into this meeting anytime you want. And as a test, you won't find anybody, or you won't find anything, but yeah. Okay. Jean is definitely having trouble.
Is Rob, is Rob here?
Bob's here.
He is.
Everybody but Mary, we would start, let's give Jean a moment to see if she can. Who is Samsung whatever?
Oh. That's Sam Beers and Sun Chang.
They need to do better.
I think.
No, it may, it may actually be a Samsung phone.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Or it, or it could be the Samsung Corporation.
All right, Samsung blue. All right, I'm gonna, whoever the Samsung is needs to name yourself. And you're muted. And you'll be excluded if I don't know who you are. Are you hearing me?
If you exclude them, they'll probably figure it out.
They, they may not know how to rename themselves.
I'll rename them if they'll speak, but they're, they're muted. Okay, well. Give them a few moments, everybody, and we've got Mary now, okay, good. Everybody but Jean, Jean is still silent. I think she's.
She's, she's logged on, she just is muted.
Mary has your new computer. You're muted.
She's still muted. Still struggling.
Yep. Yes, it is real.
All right, I guess she is, so maybe we should start anyway.
Get down here, go on.
Hang, it'll be the first time I.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's, let's call the January twenty-four town council meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. New year. New optimism. Even though it's winter, so. You got your agenda?
Join the meeting.
Somebody joined the meeting.
Jean did.
Oh.
That's what it said, anyway.
But she's still silent, okay, I'm gonna exclude Samsung, you're not, you're not, you're not helping me out, I'm gonna have to boot you. You won't be able to return if I reboot. How do I get rid of you if I don't? I can put you in the waiting room. How about if I do that, putting you in the waiting room? Got another guest. All right. We need to, we need to get started, so.
All right, motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Let me just show you the, I just added kudos to the agenda, there is no change. I can show that. There, otherwise it is as I distributed it. Any comments or suggestions, corrections?
I'll second the motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
John, has the work on the ceiling of the town hall, the sprinkler system has that been completed?
It's in my report shortly.
Oh, okay, well, I was wondering if we should give kudos there, too.
We, well, yes and no, I mean, it's good we got it done, I'll tell you about it when we get there. What am I trying to do here? Right, okay, so all in favor of approval of the agenda?
All right.
All right, agenda's approved, great. So now we go into public appearances, do we have any public appearances on any matter that's not on the agenda? Okay, no public appearances. Whoever's at three oh one? Blah blah blah, six eight?
Yeah, that's Jean.
Please identify yourself, you, you don't have a name.
It's Jean.
It's Jean Moyer.
Can she talk, Jean?
She did.
I am talking.
You're talking, okay, good, so I'm gonna name you Jean Moyer.
Yeah, when you're on the phone, the three little dots don't seem to give you an option to change your name.
Oh, they should, oh, by phone, oh, by phone.
Yeah. By phone, no.
There it goes.
Okay, good, we are on the treasure, such timeliness. Yeah, we are on the treasure support, so. Yes, I'm gonna show the treasure support.
Yeah, you can put that up. Not, not a lot to report, I'll just comment on two line items, one of which kind of touches on the sprinkler system. If you look down in the expenses, in the executive section, could be there. We had a budget line item maintenance coordinator salary, and that's not being used this fiscal year because we didn't hire one. We did hire Steve and Dane to work on the ceiling so that the sprinkler could be repaired, and we hired them as temporary workers, that way we had insurance coverage for the work being done. They, you know, kind of run their own business, but they didn't have insurance, and so the best solution was to just hire them as temporary workers. And so this was the most likely budget category to put that in. The work is finished, there's, John, either you can speak or I will, there's an unidentified potential other leak somewhere. They all spent time trying to find it and finally gave up, but Steve and Dane are, they're still on the payroll, not being paid, they're still in the system. If we needed to hire them back again temporarily, that can be done easily in our payroll system. And then, John, if you scroll down to the municipal buildings area, which I think is just maybe another page, yeah. I made the comment, you know, the water bill to me seemed, you know, it's, we're halfway through the year, we ha, we pay water quarterly as the rest of us do. So there's two quarters in there, and I went to figure out why is that showing up as such a larger percent, that's almost like three quarters of the year's worth. Really was the first quarter of our fiscal year, and that just reflected, we use water for the tennis court watering, and now we, to some extent, if the edible garden needs to use water, they can, I don't know to the extent that they do. But, so that quarter, the first quarter of our fiscal year is always gonna be a higher water bill. And so that percent should slow down as we advance into the second half of the fiscal year. But if anybody was wondering why that is at seventy-eight percent, that is apparently the reason, best I can judge in looking into the details. Those were the only comments I wanted to really focus on. But happy to answer any questions. We will be, yeah.
Well, I had a question. But I'm not sure if she had a question, but, but, somebody had a question, town attorney expenses.
Oh, the town attorney, yeah. That, the and John, you can explain as well, was it six, six municipalities have banded together to work with Pepco, and Sue Ellen is helping all of them, and so her legal fees for working on the acquisition of our streetlights are being divided by six, and we are putting her fees for helping with streetlights in that category.
Yeah, they're elaborating a little bit, where these, you know, Pepco, we've been negotiating with Pepco at the, at the direction of the Public Service Commission about a year plus ago. They directed that Pepco should work with municipalities to resolve issues that, that we believe, that are eating purchase of, municipal purchase of their own streetlights. And that's been going on, Sue Ellen was providing sort of essential advice and also a single point negotiating stance, so six of us agreed to share her expenses, we, we put down a retainer, and then we earned some additional money. And this is, this is the bulk of it, there probably, there may not, it seems unlikely there'll be more, as most of the issues that could be resolved were resolved, which is a, a large number of them, some of which are very important, we can all, we'll talk, we can talk about those if we ever get, when we get to the point of considering purchasing our streetlights, we're gonna have to talk about that now. So that explains the, the, the town attorney fees. Were there any other questions about, you had something more to say?
Uh, no, I didn't have anything else, I was just saying if anybody had any other questions that they had in looking this over, the only other thing I, if I don't know exactly when, in the next few months it's gonna happen, but we're migrating to a online, in the cloud, newer version of QuickBooks. So eventually, I may try to make these reports look a little less busy and not five pages. Maybe streamline a bit in the presentation going forward.
Okay, if there are no further questions, then let's take a vote to accept the treasure support, need a motion to accept the treasure support. Thank you, Rob. Barbara, all in favor of accepting the treasures report for December, thank you, asked unanimously. Okay, that brings, yes, to my report. First off, kudos, I simply had to be sure I knew who we were, who we, who should get recognition for the decorations of the hall and the gazebo. And the kudos go to Renee Malosnick and her elves, three or four other people who helped her with the hall decorating, Terry Cox and Bruce Rothrock acquired and put up the wreath on the outside.
Yeah.
And two nameless Grove fairies, I'm gonna call them, did the tree and decorating at the gazebo, and the Grove fairies are, are known but don't want to be known. Hence their. Anybody else Grove fairy, feel free. Right. Okay. A next, a plug is for the public hearing, it's billed for January twenty-third at seven thirty. It's a Tuesday. On ordinance twenty twenty-three, that will enable accessory dwelling units here in town. There's a, a link to that meeting, which is different than the one we have for this meeting. I neglected to put, have it added into the bulletin, we'll definitely be sending out a Grove alert with reminders that we're having that and that, with the access information. And also that written input is encouraged, even for those who want to actually speak to the, to the ordinance at the public hearing. Okay. Here's the sprinkler pipe repair, yes, it was completed, so the repair involved a, an actual leak in the pipe over the ceiling of MacArthur and Hall. Steve and Dane were hired because they were willing to remove the ceiling under that leak to enable guardian fire to, I think it's guardian fire, to actually replace a segment of this rather heavy four inch pipe, which had a leak in it, all of which was done while Steve and Dane were up. There was a joist happened to be right where they exposed the ceiling, which was actually bowing downward. It was a joist that was clearly weakened. And they addressed that, they added a second joist and were able to kind of raise the bowed part back up. So they did extra work there to prevent any, any, any issue with the, the ceiling. Once the repair was done, the, the system hasn't, the leak was discovered, it was a water leak, it was discovered when the system was pressurized, which we are required, or our fire sprinkler maintenance is required to do, and that has not been done after this repair, will be done as a matter of course, at the next, at the next testing point, but meanwhile, the system, when it's not pressured with water, is pressurized with air, and that we have a compressor that puts the air into the system, that compressor has been cycling on and off, indicating that there is an air leak somewhere in the system. Nobody has been able to find it.
At least twice a day, I hear it so far.
Yeah, so no one has been able to, in spite of some little efforts to see where, where, where it might be, have drawn a blank. So we'll have to see if that, that leak turns into a water leak when, when the system is pressurized or what, so that's just an FYI. It, it makes noise, probably drives Kathy crazy.
No, it's not that loud on my end, I just worry about it.
Well, I don't think it's anything to worry about particularly, twice a day, you know.
It would be most annoying if you were having a piano recital.
Is, really? You can hear it loud?
You can hear it up, yeah, it goes.
Where is it? It's, it's close to the.
Sort of, it, it's kind of underneath the, the lift.
I see. Okay, well then hopefully, the next test point will, will reveal what's going on.
John, if there's no water, is, is there's no water in the system right now, right? Just air?
That's correct.
So how did, how did you know there was a leak?
When they, when they pressure tested it with water, which they do quarterly or, or every six months.
Over a year ago.
A leak.
Yeah, but, but if they're, if they're in there fixing it, why wouldn't they have tested it to make sure there were no leaks when the ceiling was down?
Oh, because they charged us three hundred and fifty bucks or something just to do that?
Yeah, but it's, it sounds like there's a leak, and we're gonna have, yeah.
They're gonna charge us to do it anyway, if it leaks there, they're gonna be responsible for it.
But we're gonna have to remove that ceiling again, and all that, I mean, it sounds like there's definitely a leak.
Nobody expects it to leak there.
It's gonna leak somewhere else.
Yes.
Well.
It will be somewhere else.
That makes no sense, that they did all this work, they didn't test it to make sure that there's no leak.
Well, they probably did test it to whatever they could do, but.
Yeah.
It's.
Okay.
System.
Well, and you don't want to fill the pipes with water now, anyway, they could freeze.
Yeah, but then you have to drain them, I mean, it's a pain in the, it's.
Okay, 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 I'll.
It's a goofy old system.
Let it go, it doesn't make sense to me, but it's like, you know, not my job. Oh wait, maintenance, could be, okay. Now there's somebody in charge of the, the hall, it's their, it's their problem.
Yes, that's, and that's what happened here, so we, we took.
Yeah.
Okay, the shared use pathway report, there was nothing new to report, except that we have, I put into the documents, and I can show it here, if, if you want to see it, is we obtained a, a figure that shows the entire alignment of
Nice.
the favored, the favored alignment that starts at Brown off on the left, and, you know, drops around, sort of on the, this is a mild slope, comes down around, and then, then as you can see, runs straight, there's a boardwalk portion, which I believe is the with, I'm not sure what part is the boardwalk, maybe the diagonal lines, not certain. I didn't think there was that much boardwalk, the, the, the profile below, the, the, the schematic above shows the elevation changes with this route. Okay, this route is the, I'll remind everybody, it was, two routes were studied. This was the cheaper of the two. The route that they, they believe, they, their consultants believe has the least environmental impact on, on, on trees and what have you. And it's the only negative with this route is that it crosses, as you can see, the, the potential alignment of the roadway where Crab's Branch extended to Amity. Something they were, initially they were, you know, unhappy with that, but we, I think we've, we basically argued that since that road is not funded, it isn't even proposed to be funded yet, it won't be built, everybody agrees, including some council members, that if it's built in ten years, that will be soon, that this, the Washington Grove Connector should not wait for that, so we are promoting that it's worth this expense, even though part of the roadway may, part of the bikeway may be in the, in, in the way of this road, which will just have to be, you know, be, be rebuilt, you know, in a better way, so. Okay, that's.
Yeah, John, this is, this is Bob, so do we know that this is the one that they are going to pursue?
Yes, this was their preferred route.
Okay, great.
We had that discussion. The other route, which stayed pretty much out of the roadway alignment, the punitive roadway alignment, involved a kind of a high bridge over the, I don't know if you can see my, my arrow here. There's a wetlands right here, it's rather deep, it's down here, you can just see the, a bit of it here. But up above this alignment, up, up here, it's, it's much deeper, so the, the. So the, the, there would have to be a bridge of some length at. They said it was, they were talking like twenty-five or thirty feet, was that?
Wow.
Yeah, and they did, they thought that was a bad idea. And it would cost more, so the whole thing would cost more. So that, they, they, they have declared this route the preferred route. We agree, this is a great route, there's nothing wrong with this route whatsoever. Except for that defect I just told you. The other problem is that the cost of connect, completing the connector. Means that it will require specific budgeting. By in the cap, in a capital improvement project. The Department of Transportation had, is preparing their recommended. Department of Transportation Capital Improvement. List for two, F fiscal twenty-five, which would start July first twenty-four. And they had not planned to put this on there. However, we have written a letter. And I, it's a little more, I didn't get it done as soon as I thought, but I got it done today. That writing to them to urge them to put it on the capital improvement program, the FY twenty twenty-five. If for some reason it doesn't get on there, whether they already have submitted one to the county executive. Or or whatever reason. Sydney Cats and we are prepared to pursue this to the executive and to the county council to get this put on. Into the capital improvement budget. So the funding is at, is, we're now at the point of getting it funded, that's the bottom line. And sooner, you know, the soonest it can be funded is in fiscal twenty twenty-five. And that is, may require some lobbying to.
So, so John, the the previous amount, had they not said that the previous amount that they were talking about included both design and construction?
Yeah, they had, the funds would have covered design and construction, weren't able to be constructed for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars back, way back when, remember, Bob? Unfortunately, the, the, the time has frittered away, and we had the pandemic, which has caused everything to increase in price by substantial, like thirty percent.
Okay.
Believe. So the cost has now, that money would have come out of the bikeways. Small project fund, whatever the funds, those were lump funds. And and this is now beyond the intent of those, that budgeted item. And 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 therefore falls under a specific capital requirement.
Okay, thanks.
So I've got to let Mimi in here. Okay. Okay, that's where this stands, and we will let you know as things go along. When we discussed this previously, we will. Certainly recruit our neighboring communities to to advocate for budgeting. This small connector, which is, you know, nine hundred feet is the length of this. It has much greater impact than it, than that little bit would suggest. So we'll, we'll, we will hopefully recruit the city of Gaithersburg, the Grove community. And if the, if Amity, the Amity community has some interested residents or any organization, we'll try and get them to weigh in. Since all of us will benefit from this, for this being built.
And one, one other question, John, the little connector from Amity to us, is that included in this still?
It's still included, yeah.
It's a separate piece.
It's a separate.
Yeah, they're working on it, though, yeah.
They'd take that one out of the bike ways, but that's a small, very small potato. I forgot what that budget was, but it was.
Well, it was originally eight thousand dollars, but I don't know what it is now.
Yeah, it was in the multi thousands, that's all. And so, yeah, okay. So let me remove that, we'll move on. Stormwater infrastructure RFP, which we had hoped to have in a draft. By by this meeting, isn't, as usual, the holidays and personal, personal crises or issues. So this week, we are expecting to get some technical information from Jason.
Mills.
Mills and and his, his coworkers, which will, which. Patty and 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 others are going to drop into an RFP. And we'll try and get this thing fixed up as soon as possible, so the council can look at it and we can get it out for bid. But it's not happening today, and we can hope it may happen by the February meeting. So that's the status on Stormwater. The other one that we would all like to address, and which I've now renamed, neglected maintenance of properties. Christine, no vacant. The term vacant is no longer used, neglected maintenance of properties. Yeah, so Ellen also ran into personal and priority issues over the holidays. I'm sorry about this, Rob. But we will definitely get, address exactly what what the council has been asking for. Let me show you what how, what I, just to show you that, you know.
And I understand that the car is gone.
Yeah, it got moved to Susan's house.
Oh, good.
But it's gone, yeah. Just relocate, it's been relocated.
Sounds good.
Well, they will be able to find it at Susan's house, so. It's gone.
Okay, I, just for your information, this is what I, I actually, I wrote out a direction and and so Ellen, we, we, we discussed this and we'll probably discuss it again. The, and two parts. A here is regarding legal actions, we want to be able to evaluate if and when it may be prudent use of resources to seek court-directed legal action. Would, would you prepare a written review of state, county, and town laws ordinances that apply to this problem and explain the process? Accessible to the town for going about legal enforcement action? So that, that addresses current legal options. Then B is the other part of this, which the town presently lacks a written policy and procedures for approaching property owners in the cases of neglected maintenance. The town council, I seek your advice on the, on, on the, on the incremental approaches and or enforcement actions. Short of turning to the mandated court action that's A, that we can apply to obtain cooperation of property owners. So this is what I've asked her for. And it's, it's a lot, so hopefully she can provide it in written form. Here I say, you know. If she feels, and she probably will, that, that talking to you, the council is in order, then we'll do that.
That's great, this request is, I think, exactly what we're looking for. So thank you, John, for putting this together and sending it to her. Look forward to seeing her results. I I would suggest that we may want to have a closed session. Because she's rendering legal advice to the town. So that we are be able to preserve attorney-client privilege assertions we might want to make.
That's a, that's a good suggestion. Okay. The last point here on my, on my report is, I've titled demographics of Washington Grove. I have asked Charlie a number of times in the last couple of years. Whether, whether he had access to the specific census results. For Washington Grove, which detail, you know, all kinds of. You know, composition of households, et cetera, et cetera, for the town. And the answer was no. But it turns out in August, they finally have released. The compilation of demographics down to a census tract level or zip code level. That's the good news. The bad news is that you actually have to go in and pull out what you want. You can't just say, please give me Washington Grove and get everything, you know, from A to Z. You have to actually go into each category of interest, at least the best I can tell. Bottom line is, we need someone to replace Charlie as our census liaison. And which could be the same person as, as one willing to look into the twenty twenty census data and compile it for. For our edification and potential use. So I'm looking for a census liaison, I'm, I am talking to one person, I'll be talking to them tomorrow, so I may have the. Someone at least for one of these two tasks, but if anyone else knows anyone or wants to suggest anyone who might be interested.
Sure, I'll do it.
That would be good. You'll do it?
Sure.
All right, let me talk to.
Yeah, talk to the other person.
I wanna, yeah, it's.
Do what they want to do.
Right. Okay, it's not the world's most cha, uh, time-consuming thing in general through. The ten years until there is a census, but but extracting this data will take a little bit of. Obviously you have to be, you have to be somewhat able to go into these, it's a massive. The interface is okay, but it's a massive table, really massive, okay.
If anybody can do it, Christine can.
That's right.
Exactly.
Right. I'm, I'm well acquainted with census data, so.
I can do it, Christine can, and I, I thought I could do it, but you know, I'm, I'm not about to. Take the responsibility of putting it all together, so I'm not gonna do it. Hopefully someone else will. Good, thank you, Christine, excellent. All right, that's the end of my report, things I had on. Plate. But some of the others I categorized as administrative matters, so we're on to administrative matters. First of which is our audit auditor. I have Jean is still on, I hope, she said she had to abandon.
I'm here.
At nine o'clock, so that we need to put out an RFP for auditing services. You may recall, our current RFP allowed for, was, was allowed for awarding the contract for annually up to five total years. We're in the fifth year with Lindsay Associates. So we need to rebid our auditing services. And I'm gonna speak for Jean, but also for others and for good common sense. And that is that it is often, where possible, a good fiscal policy to change your auditor. So that somebody new takes a look, and we don't, we don't perpetuate. Any errors or any, anything overlooking something. So that's a possibility here, we'll have to see. So Jean, I'll let you talk about that. Jean has volunteered to revamp. Our audit services RFP, the last one was in two thousand nineteen. Jean, you want to say something about that?
Yeah, I mean, there's not a lot to revamp, except that it, it, it touches on a few things like. Requesting that they send in the proposal in a sealed bid by snail mail. I, I would like, I know the charter indicates that is the, the way we do it when we do contracting. But I can't imagine any CPA firm out there is going to print the proposal and put it in an envelope. I think having, it could come to two people, the, the proposals by email. So the charter does indicate that if the council permits, we can bypass the sealed bid approach. Some asking if the council is okay with that idea. And I want to make sure that whoever we hire is well-versed in the new online version of QuickBooks. That, you know, where I can give them a read-only access into it. And they can do audit testing of whatever they want to without the need of, you know, getting me to send them documents. So it's just, the RFP just kind of stipulates how we want them to interact with us, and I want to update that in those regards. And, you know, it talks about wanting twelve printed copies, we really only want one. And we want to make sure they give us an electronic copy. So those stipulations need just, it just needs some tweaking. I, I've written RFPs for audits before, so it, it's not a big. Brain exercise, I just need to. Do some editing, that's all. But I would like permission to tell them they can send the proposals by email.
Yeah. So. You can read between the lines here, the audit can create some, a time, a time sink for the treasurer. So. It's in Jean's best interest to make it more efficient. It is one of the time, time-consuming activities that the treasurer has to be participating in. All right, so we'll, we'll see that, and if we get the audit approved, RFP approved in February, is that soon enough? We would then be able to ask for the proposals in time for March and award it in March.
Yeah, I think that.
Audits usually start in like March or April, so maybe that will.
They, they do preliminary work in, in the March-April timeframe, more like April. They do preliminary work, and if it was a new audit firm, there would be even more preliminary work that they would do to understand our internal controls and our processes. Which are all written up, it's just a matter of getting them. They always want copies of the minutes, but you know, that's all in electronic form, it's very easy to, to upload. They all have portals into their auditing systems, you just upload. You just upload it, it just is time-consuming to pull it all together and then do the upload. That's usually the preliminary work, the, the real audit testing really happens once I can close out the fiscal year, which is sometime in. By August. And then, once we've closed the fiscal year, I cannot make any more changes to it. And that's what, what they are auditing.
Okay. So there's nothing to do here, except to anticipate we'll be trying to. Finalize the RFP for, for distribution in February. Along with ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh eight, the, the. The accessory dwelling. And no doubt, three other things, they always happen at the same time. Okay, let me go on to, on to the next item, administrative matter, which is. Which is a proposal.
I, I have a question, was Jean asking us to approve the change of receiving?
Well, do that next, well, you're asking for any comments, you don't need approval, we'll have the RFP next time, then you'll be approving it.
Yeah. And, and by approving the, if the RFP says by email, then you're approving that change.
Got it, okay, thanks.
All right, I'll move on to the dumpster enclosure at the Commercial Corner. Peter and the Border Committee, Peter, who representing the town and the Border Committee.
Gateway Committee.
Sorry, I'm still. Eight May, years to get rid of the word border. Gateway Committee has, you know, on, on, on. Agreement by the County Department of Transportation that the dumpster was interfering with. With visibility, which is a really good excuse to get that ugly thing out of there. And the property owner Tatiana Bell has agreed to get it out of there. We have a number, we had, we had a meeting with her and it's down, we can hit that, we're gonna hit that down in the council reports. Suffice it to say that I propose that under certain circumstances. It would, in fact, likely circumstances, the town would pay for removing the dumpster, we're talking about three thousand dollars. We got, we got a quote from, from RJ Landscaping. We got we got a quote from um from uh RJ Landscaping and uh and then Ms. Bell got a not a me a lower quote, both of which were in the neighborhood of 3,000. So um I'm just uh uh putting out there that we we I would like to have be able to uh offer a town payment for uh this uh removal. The next part of it is that if you remove the dumpster, which is for the use of the tenants of the Commercial Corner. Um she's enthusiastic about removing it, by the way, for a number of reasons. Not the least of which is that uh regularly sofas and furniture and other stuff appear in that dumpster because people just toss it in there because they don't realize they only have to go another half mile and they can throw it into the trash in the into the uh uh trash station. Um so she said it's an attractive nuisance is the uh is the the bottom line. Um the I think there needs to be an alternative for the tenants to put their trash and um we have proposed uh basically that uh the the tenants can put their trash either in an enclo- uh in ordinary garbage cans in an enclosure, so they're not ugly back there. There's all I'll I'll remind everybody, there is an enclosure already that encloses a propane tank um back on the backside on the. But that one or two trash cans would suffice for the trash that that developed by the tenants, keeping in mind, there's no food, no kitchens. It's just, you know, it's the office-type trash presumably, although I don't know what kind of trash the beauty shops create. Um and another possibility then is how is that picked up? Well, we can stick with picking it up. Or uh we discussed the possibility that our contractor could just handle this pickup like any other uh like the the Hall pickup, for example, like Catherine Hall pickup. And pick it up once a week a- as usual. Um we don't necessarily have to pay for that and we could we could we could um assess the commercial property for that service. But that would pr- create a nice solution, uh attractive solution, we think, to uh to uh make possible the removal of the dumpster. So that's where we are. So I'm gonna ask the council for a sense of the council. Is it is there anybody who would object that we pay for the removal of the dumpster? Um I can expand on this. The there are other issues with the Commercial Corner, as you all should know. We have two of them at the moment. The one that we've had for a long, long time is how to how to make the Commercial Corner more attractive, more grove-like. Uh and from the owner's point of view, how to make it a more viable um business um of activity. A lot of people in town would like to have a coffee shop. Um a lot of people have in town don't want any food preparation. Uh the current the new comprehensive plan proposes a a some additional you allowed uses. And so in exchange for expanding the uses there that don't cause undue impact. The owner is willing to uh um look at renovating the facades at least. She's thinking she's talking about a second story. I don't want to go into all these details because it's all just talk. But um suffice to say uh that uh you know, if 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 by by cooperating, by the time cooperating removing the dumpster, we all get on good terms. And for um making some sort of progress on that issue. And the other issue, I said there were two. The other i- issue is that um to um build the last bit of a of a multi-user pathway from Gaithersburg. It needs to go from the corner, the the traffic uh intersection to Brown Street. And that needs to go along this Commercial Corner property. And for it to be the best width for that purpose, some property some private property would be helpful. So we would we've approached her about an easement for three feet, rough two to, I don't know, but it's two or four feet. I think uh a property which could be used to expand and put in the sidewalk. Paved pathway um uh through to Brown Street. So these are negotiating points. So the idea of how being able to contribute to removing the uh the dumpster is useful. So I I I just have any hear any objections uh or or anything I we have. We certainly have a budget category. We can use this. Um we'd like to get that thing out of there as soon as possible and get at least this one issue resolved. So uh I open it to the council for any comments.
Yeah, there's one there's one thing that going back to the original statement that the town is paying $3,000. When this is this was discussed like five years ago by the Gateway Committee. It's not like we're we're just we're it's one-sided. They just had, she just spent over $50,000 paving that park, the driveway, the uh parking spaces. And so when that dumpster gets removed, she's gonna have to have those people come back and redo that parking area, which is gonna cost her more than $3,000. So we figure that this is more not us giving $3,000 to get this removed, but more of a partnership where we're splitting the expenses. And that was before the the bike path and all the other reasons why we wanted to be removed.
Anyone else here to comment on this?
I'm totally on board with us helping out getting the dumpster removed. I know this has been talked about for a long time. So yes. As soon as possible, I say go for it.
I agree 100%.
Yep, me too.
So Tat- Tatiana said that uh she will tell her tenants if we approve tonight that that worry first, they will not be using the dumpster. And she wants to remove the dumpster like basically um right away. So if if it's approved tonight, and and John was very very positive as far as uh moving forward with this, which was very very helpful.
Right. So the alternative trash pickup hasn't been resolved, but we will certainly approach. Jean's gonna have to remind me the name. The name of our trash pickup change is monthly.
Aren't they the pink trash?
Yeah. Oh, well, they used to be. Then it became GFL. Now it's called Casella. They keep selling it.
The only way you can tell is on the invoice, uh the 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 name on the invoice.
No, you know, the funny thing is the the invoice of the address you mail it to. And and what you put on the check is Casella, but the invoice is identical to what it's been forever.
Alright, so we'll talk to them about picking up the trash there and try and resolve that and to see how that will be paid for going forward. Okay, good. Alright, still on administrative matters. Um I threw in the proposed new signage in Woodward Park and the playground. Uh I'll let Eva give a brief explanation um of what she's proposed in an in an email I I um we all got. Um but go ahead, Eva.
Yeah, so this is just coming from, I guess, um John, you met with the town insurer. I think maybe Peter did was there too. And so this was this, these are the signage recommendations from the town insurer. Um and I didn't I didn't know if there's like a place we should get the signs from, but I just went ahead and did some Googling and found a place that makes signs like this. And I already checked the Spanish with Oscar and he said it all looks good. Um and so I I'm guessing that there'll be three separate signs and we're not gonna try to cram all of this onto one sign. Um and that, you know, the one that tells the park hours will be at the driveway entrance into the park. Um the playground one will be at the playground and then the other one, I guess, maybe will be on the the board that's there by the field. I I don't know. Um so we may need to you know, get some poles to put them on because I know the the hour sign that's at the driveway right now. It looks like something happened to it and it's a little wonky. So um yeah, but that's, yeah, so I guess I'm just you know, kind of waiting for someone to say, yep, sounds good, go ahead and do it and um get the signs and get RJ to put them up maybe. Yeah.
John, did we get the audit report from them?
No.
Because because it would be written in there. Would that be it would be good to double check. She's she I I was just from memory saying the three things, but.
Oh, yeah, that would be good to double check.
I thought we would have gotten that report by now where she would have it.
We should have.
Yeah, so maybe we could just double check.
Kathy, can you?
That's okay. Um I have to go into the system and find it and download it. They don't send it to you.
Okay, so.
Okay. So yeah, that would be good before we get the sign made, just to make sure that those are the signs we need.
Yeah.
But so if anybody has comments or if the language needs to be tweaked, let me know, but it 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 seems pretty straightforward.
Right. And and just so you to recall, uh the council report says the language. Well, um Eva sent an email, but it's here, it's it's here in the council. Report right there and I have it highlighted in yellow, so. You can you can see what the proposed language is. Okay, good. Last item um in administrative matters is uh our renewable energy conversion incentive uh program. So um there are two applications that uh passed muster with the Sustainability Committee. Uh passed muster with our town representative Liz Gillanders. Um but because these are the first two, um and Jean took taking her treasurer's role seriously and myself, we wanted to look over in the over the 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 applications. Um which we did and um we thought that there it required a few tweaks just to ensure that the right sort of um documentation uh was being provided. So we've had a discussion. Paul may be on the call now, but I I want you to talk, Paul, and just in case there's a question. Um we agreed to some revisions on the required documentation. Um as well, um Liz talked to Mary and emailed me and was um asking that we clarify her role as the town representative, which is the layer between the Sustainability Committee itself and the treasurer. Um so Jean is going to write up uh what the town representative is supposed to be doing. The the reason we have a town representative is supposed to relieve Jean of any of the of the um, you know, the the checking of 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 the documentation. So um it's once again, reminding everyone, this is a pilot program. So all of this, we're just tweaking um everybody's role and I wanted you to know that. In addition, we have a the the two that were approved have been actually uh approved. And uh the funds have been distributed. So the two two uh two uh grants have been made in in that uh program. Okay, any questions on that? Right. Alright, that takes us down the agenda. There was no unfinished business for tonight. Uh but we do have some new business. And the new business was um raised by Bruce Deggie, who's on the uh on the call. Bruce, you're still here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, um can you give just a brief uh explanation of what it is about the Conservation Meadow that uh you would like to see addressed?
Sure, thank you. Um and I want to thank uh Georgette Cole, who helped me understand some of the background for uh the management of the meadows uh, you know, dating back 10 years or more. So there there was an operation and use plan uh that the that Parks follows for the management of the meadows and they do the the mowing every spring, but it seemed to me that the meadows were becoming less meadow-like. And if you look at that operation and use plan, if you look at the photographs and the aerial view and the operation use plan from 10 years ago, it's quite different from the appearance of the meadows now. The meadows were more meadow-like 10 years ago. And it's uh it's largely the red cedars, but not only the the red cedars that they've they've allowed to grow. And the other thing that I did, I I went to the Parks website and looked at the the meadows where they are doing restoration plans. And there are four meadows that they list in the park system where they're doing that. None of them are much larger, if any larger than our meadows. In fact, some of them are quite a bit smaller. Um but they say they prioritize those meadows because they get high use. Uh and they're testing uh methods to remove invasive species in those meadows. So I I had a conversation with Diana Loscher uh in the Parks Department, who's part of that restoration program. Uh she said she was willing to come out and take a look at it and and, you know, begin a dialogue with us. And I would like to, I would like us to do that. I I would like us to have a meadow committee again that liaises uh with the Parks Department to see if they could give a little bit more priority uh to the the ecological maintenance of our meadows.
So this is a excellent example of how committees come into being and get started to address an issue that uh the town uh residents uh believe is uh is important. So um I think Bruce has agreed to kind of uh lead uh and any group of resident volunteers who are interested in participating in um in the discussions with the Parks Department a- as to how to um achieve the goals for the meadow that were put in the operations and use, or whether they should be changed, or whatever action is deemed appropriate to uh reach um goal. Um whatever changes will obviously end up coming back to the council. Um but uh the process of getting there uh and the and the expertise and the knowledge will be um as as we usually do, will depend on our 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 top-notch residents who are interested to um to be our staff in this case. So the council's welcome to to comment on the issue, whether they think this this is an issue. Um but I, you know, this is a volunteer group. We're not directing anybody to do it. Um it's an advisory group that, like any individual, comes to the council and advises or asks the council to do something. That's how we handle this. So uh we're merely here to be supportive at this point. So uh any comments?
Pat Klein. Join the meeting. So I have a a thought about, you know, if we do go ahead and make a committee, you know, who would be on it? And I'm thinking, uh and and I don't want to put Georgette on the spot because I haven't talked to her about this yet, but because of the F and B committee's, you know, experience with trees and plantings and knowledge and expertise and all of that, that they are somehow represented on this committee. Um, you know, and be involved because I think it would just really add a lot to that committee.
Bruce, I I think it's great that you're um doing this. It's, you know, is it is is the meadow? Is it a lawn? Is it a forest? And there's lots of lots of opinions about that. And I think it would be great if the town could speak to the county um with one voice as to what we have, especially if we do have the expertise of the woods. It may be um, you know, F and B or whatever, you know, whoever's on it. I don't know. But I I really like, I really appreciate the fact that you're taking, you know, you're you're taking this responsibility and getting us organized. I think it'll be very helpful.
Thank you. Uh and I I, you know, I'm not sure if parks. Thank you. And I, you know, I'm not sure if Parks realizes how much the meadows are used. I mean, not just by people in Washington Grove, but there are the connections to the Amity community and people come from farther afield. I think, I mean, every time I walk over there, I run into other people. So, you know, I think the county needs to realize that our meadows are used a lot too. I think there's educational opportunities, just as they're promoting at the other sites and. Yeah, I think, again, it's just a dialogue. I'm not sure how far it'll go. I'm not sure what will come back. But I, I just think we should start a dialogue to let them know we care and maybe they'll do a little more.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea to have somebody from the Parks Department come out and, and take a look and I had, I hadn't thought about this until Barbara mentioned it, but I'm wondering, like, would it make sense to have this be in like the F and B committees per view? Oh, and I think Patty's here and has a comment too, but like, would we need to make a separate meadow committee? Or could another interested committee kind of take this on? So just a question.
I'm fine with it. I mean, whatever people want to do, whatever, whatever, you know, whoever wants to volunteer.
All right.
John, Georgette has her hand up.
So does George, yes, and so does Patty. Were you before Patty, Georgette? Okay, Patty, you go. Go ahead.
Okay, I just wasn't, sorry, I just wasn't sure. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, gotcha.
Okay, sorry, my, my mic and audio are not working on the camera. So, yeah, I just wanted to give Bruce a heads up. Yeah, we Woods Committee have on occasion been engaged with Maryland Park and Planning, I'm sorry, Montgomery County Park and Planning, as you know, we had to work with them regarding some of the controlled or permitted hunting because they own the lower meadow and, but they also manage the conservation meadow for us. So we have been on and off engaged with the county. I know actually Dave Cosson's still here. When he was actually one of the council liaisons to the county for the conservation meadow, we have engaged with them from time to time. So there is a, a history of our communication and, and coordination with them. So certainly Woods Committee, I don't want to speak for the entire committee or Joan, but you know, we'll certainly be happy to participate or, or help work through some of these processes. We have a, certainly a vested interest in making sure everything between the east woods or the wooded areas and the meadows, you know, are sort of in sync. So I just wanted to let you know that.
Great. Georgette, speak.
All right. Um, yes, I think that the, I've spoken to pretty much everyone who's on the Poristry and Beautification Committee, although we won't have our next meeting until March. And basically, everyone that I have spoken to is in favor of the concept. And I think that our committee could probably find at least one or two people who would be willing to work on a committee led by Bruce to work on the project.
Okay. All right, so at this point, I don't want to get the, I want to be sure we keep our separate state and private advisors separate. So I think Bruce has heard enough that he can take the ball running from here, put together a group and start communicating with Parks Department. As always, you know, if you need official support, by the way, Christine is the Conservation Park liaison, which is up, up to now been a pretty, pretty small, small commitment. But she's actually, would be, would be the contact for any issues in the conservation park. So, okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
Yeah.
Okay, John, I, I have some, some files that I've been, I'll get together with Bruce and share with him on contacts and substances and so on.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Okay, if there are any other new business that's not on the agenda, you can speak now, otherwise I'll go on to the council. All right, well, let's go on to the council reports. We handled a bunch of the things that were current. I have three things of note, one of which we already dealt with part of, most of. And that was the meeting with Tatiana Bell, the owner of the Commercial Corner. If I didn't say it, Peter said it, it was, it was a congenial meeting. Everybody wants to be cooperative about it. The, the issue with the dumpster with the council's agreement will be handled, I think, to everybody's satisfaction.
Hey, John, one, one thing that we didn't really mention, which is pretty exciting, is that she's, we're going to meet with her once a month. And she has some plans already drawn up of how she'd like to maybe, you know, improve the look of the building itself. And Bob was at the meeting.
And enlarge the bill.
I think you said abolish it. Yeah, and then, and Bob, and, and Bob has some ideas of, of how we can, you know, how she can improve. So we're going to be talking with her. So instead of her just coming and saying, you know, here's what I'm going to do, the town will actually have some input into what happens, all based on whether she can make some money out of the place to pay for it. But it's moving in a really good direction.
Right, and anyone who, the, I, I would kind of urge everybody at their earliest convenience to look at the comprehensive plan and see what it has to say about the Commercial Corner. Because we have made efforts in the past to facilitate interaction with the property owner, which have not gone well.
John, could you speak closer to your microphone? I can barely hear you. And, yeah, and I can hear everybody else fine.
Anybody else not hearing me?
I wasn't, I was having trouble too. I was just going to let you go.
I'm comfortable with this, John.
It's better not to hear, but yeah, okay. I don't know what to do about it. I'll just speak a little closer to the screen. Okay. So, so, you know, I think this is going to lead to some interesting proposals as, as time plays out and maybe sooner rather than later. All right, the next item was also Peter's, Peter's reports in both the Gateway Committee, which is the Border Committee, just in case you forgot. And, and the maintenance, his maintenance role that assigns all around town are cited for either new installations, restoration or replacement. And you should read the report, the town, the council reports for, which details most of those that are in progress. So that's, those are things people see, Peter knows this. You know, they'll see these, these changes, so it will be, it will be worthwhile getting them done in the near future. And all of them, all of them, you know, any, any controversial signs will come back to the council, but most of them are far from controversial, so. I don't think, anyway. The town can, can create controversy out of almost anything, but I shouldn't say that. All right, and the last one was the, we already handled a good summary of the signage proposal for the parks. So and pointed out the language there and invited any, any comments.
Hey, John, I just thought of something else that I wanted to just bring up, which is about the EPSC, the Emergency and Safety Preparedness Committee. Just that, you know, I'm the liaison, but I'm not really sure what's going to happen to that committee. You know, Dave Letter stepped down and it was a pretty small committee to begin with. So I'm just throwing that out there that, you know, we're talking about, oh, the meadow, this is how committees form. And then I'm wondering, like, is this just lack of interest how committees go away? So anyway, just, just thought I would bring that up.
Okay, well, it's good to bring it up. Actually, Dave Cosson is on the call, he's out there, he's doing, doing something else. He may have heard his name. But he was on that committee for, for some time and, you know, Dave, maybe Dave can be persuaded to. It depends how committed he feels to the issue of, of the safety issues. I know Dave has been a proponent of a variety of the things that the committee addressed and a variety of the things that have improved things around town, both, both directly and also with the county's, county's responsibilities around town as well. So Dave, I'm, I'm pointing the finger at you. Ava's worried about the EPSC, not worried about, she's wondering if the EPSC is going to fade away for lack of both membership and a chairman who would, who would, you know, lead on, on the issue. So I, I mentioned your name just because you had previous interest.
Oh, right, and Patty does, has said that she would potentially be interested in doing a co-chair situation. Did that right, Patty? So nothing to be decided now, but just thought I would throw that out there.
Thank you, that's good.
Yeah, this is Patty. Sorry, yeah, this is Patty. I would consider that as long as we get somebody else to share that. Thanks.
Okay, anything else about, anything in your reports? All right, if not, we need a motion to approve the posting of the reports, making them available. Of course, they're already available, but we'll post them on the website.
So moved, Barbara?
A second.
And Eva's seconded, all in favor? All right, unanimous for, for that. Done, all right, we're on to the minutes. I apologize for getting the minutes to you as late as yesterday. Well, behind by sort of revision of them. I need a motion to.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay.
Was that Eva?
Mary.
Oh, thanks, Mary.
All right. Does anyone have any further comments, any comments about the minutes, corrections, additions?
I had, I had three grammatical errors.
Oh, please.
Yeah, really bad ones. The, I, didn't everybody see them? Go down, there's, there's.
You have to tell me where they are. I do a spell check, so it's not spelling.
No, it's, it's, there's three good ones. Hold on a second, I have to go pull up my copy. If you go down, just go scroll through it.
Yeah.
Wait, 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 wait. You've gone too far.
Oh, you're reading it as I go.
Oh, yeah, well, there's one about the, the post office is one. Okay. Unless you fix it, yeah, here's one, D.
Yep.
I understand that second sentence. UPS, consumer advocate, period, staff or post office, it just needs to be.
Staff at our post office report.
There you go.
Longtime postmaster, all right, so that was a missing.
Right.
Thank you.
Then there's one above that where the period's missing, so the two sentences are attached.
In, in the same, no.
If you, no, it's above, it's, it's at the very beginning.
A C B what?
I don't know.
Ceiling hall.
Let me see if I can pull up my, here, I have, let's see if I can pull it up.
I can say been replaced by the contractor and ceiling.
Oh, I have it right here. One, page one. Needs a period.
While he's looking, John, I told you that in the.
Oh, wait, I have it, it's B, Treasury Report B.
Yeah.
The current audit to contract with Lindsay Associates has ended. A request for proposal for a new audit contract will be reviewed afterward. Need a period there.
Got it.
And then the last one is morning docs for reference. I think it's towards the end. But Kathy's saying she's sending documents.
Where? What, what part, Peter?
Ever so.
I don't know, the comments, I've got to find it, the comments.
Did I, I overlooked, you sent something, go ahead. Somebody sent something.
Mary, Mary did.
I did. You, you corrected it.
Okay, good, thank you.
Where, was it said morning documents?
Morning?
Yeah, it's, it says that the documents will be sent at the end. It's towards the end of this.
Training update with MCDOT took place this morning. Sorry, another run.
Did you get it?
Yep, got it.
All right. I can delete that, all right.
Documents for reference were included in the council. All right, thank you for catching those. I'll get the minutes out earlier, so you, you don't have to waste time here at this meeting. Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay. In that case, we can move to approve.
Peter moved and Mary seconded.
I mean, we can vote. I have a vote then. Let me get rid of that.
I give you one, but it doesn't mean anything.
I have to, I have to, I have to somehow kill, oh, cut it out. Trying to stop the share, there we go. Okay.
Hi.
Unanimous, thank you all. Sorry, I'm wasting everyone's time on, on grammatical, gramm. So, the, all right, so the, that brings us to the end of the meeting and the next meeting. Reminding everyone again, on the 23rd Tuesday, that is just a little over a week from, two weeks, okay? Less than two weeks, yeah. We'll have the public hearing, an ordinance 2023-08. As comments received, I'm going to be putting them into a folder that will be made available as well. I'll give the link to that to everybody in the alert, we'll send out a week in advance. And then the next council meeting is February 12th. Okay, so if everyone's happy, we can move to adjourn.
Wow.
I, I will point out that the next, the February's meeting will, we already know we're going to attempt to deal with the auditing services. We will have the ADU ordinance to do, there's something else that I'm overlooking that may be of material interest. So.
Stormwater management RFP.
That's right, the stormwater management RFP, thank you, Joan. We'll hopefully have a, a draft of that to run by the council and maybe we can approve it and maybe we can at least get it close to approval. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Night, everybody, yeah. Thanks, John. Bye, guys.
Night, everyone.